You're on set.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us at our 6:00 PM meeting. We're gonna review discussion on a few explanations of salary increases for Treasurer Collector, Board of Assessors, and the Chief of Police. So first on the agenda is Treasurer Collector.
Hello, how's everyone?
So you wanna increase, well, the way I understand it, you're not looking to increase your hours, just increase your, because you're already almost working the hours.
Well, I'm getting paid for thirty hours.
Right, correct. And you're doing over that consistently.
Like to get paid for thirty-four hours. And I've explained why. A lot of it's because of what the DOR would like us to do.
Yeah.
And I've broken it down.
More unfunded mandates, or?
A lot of tax title work. Yeah, we've always got those.
Yeah, those are different.
A lot of tax title work. The new, the DOR wants the new payroll and accounting software.
Okay.
And we had met with the gentleman that Mr. Shanahan had wanted us to meet with, and he indicated that it would take many, many hours of training.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll get that grant. That's kind of up in the air.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, lots of tax title work, which we've already started. We've just started land of low value, town-owned properties. It takes a lot of time.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot of time.
Okay.
And I've also asked for the Assistant Collector. She's right now working sixteen hours a week.
Right.
But I've looked her, bring her up to nineteen hours a week. The lady that was here before her had nineteen hours a week.
Right.
Her too. She's gonna need the hours for the payroll.
Uh-huh.
She always, during busy times, like now, she's always, she's working more than sixteen hours a week. She has to. She has to. And when I'm out, if I'm on vacation, sick, she covers for me. So we usually, at the end of the year, for the last two years, we've actually had to transfer money into her line item.
Okay.
So we might as well just give her the nineteen hours a week and keep it steady all the time.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Right. So. The, the question, the new accounting software, will they provide any more efficiency for you?
I think, um, it's gonna take a long time to learn. He's gonna be doing the accounting software. We're gonna be doing the payroll end of it, just like we do now with BMSI. And we'll each have to learn it, and then together, we'll be able to put the two systems together. I think eventually, it's gonna be great, but it's just gonna take a long time. And I don't know what he quoted in his.
I don't have that.
Well, yeah, he had quoted a lot of hours.
He told us how many hours, yep.
To learn it, to get it going. You know, they'll be back and forth with us a lot for quite a while to get it up and running.
The other question we had was going back to when hours were reduced. It seems like I, I've been, you know, I've backtracked a few years, and it seems like we've been losing ground. And you mentioned, ever since your hours were reduced, it's been more difficult.
Yeah. The lady before me had thirty-eight hours, and her assistant had nineteen.
It's, it's, it's still a huge increase, but I, you know, I've got a plot here to show how we've been losing ground. Year after year, we're not, we don't have any more money to run down. But the school budgets continue to, but at this point, I don't think we can blame the school budget, I mean, the management at the school level, because this seems to be a trend across the state. We're just not keeping up with.
Right.
So hopefully, you can get caught up in.
So we've already begun with the tax title. I just got paperwork in from the, our lawyers, we're sending five properties to tax title within the next couple of weeks. So we're getting there. Everything's been sitting there for like thirty, forty years. Nobody's touched it for thirty, forty years, you know?
So your thirty hours would go to thirty-four.
Yeah.
The assistant must go to nineteen.
From sixteen to nineteen.
And the rate of pay?
Yes, she gets, I wrote it down here somewhere.
Jen, in front of you, there should be a sheet that has all the rates of pay, current rates of pay.
Marcia gets sixteen thirty-seven an hour.
Is that what she's getting now?
Yes. So this is reflective of the current rate of pay, or is there an increase?
Um, it's also a two percent increase.
A two percent?
Yes.
Okay, I think I missed that part.
Yes.
Chomping on my cheez-it at that point.
That's right.
All right. No, I agree. I mean, the hours, and I think the DOR report shows that there is, there is a need for our tax titles and our things in that area to, to be addressed. Takes a lot of work.
Yeah.
And that comes with time, and, and so I, I agree with the increase of the times. And as far as the percentage of raise, I, I've always taken the stand that I believe everybody in town deserves a raise, because we do work hard for little, and we've cut, and we've tried to cut back. So I think I look at what it looks like across the board. For me, I, I just, it's hard for me to say one department is more important than the other.
Absolutely.
And I'm kind of, I look at it as a cola. I look at, because if we did merit raises, we wouldn't have enough money.
Yeah.
So.
In terms of the tininess of following up on delinquencies, there was a statement in the DOR report indicating that you could, you, if you delay too long, you lose your lien or?
That's right. That's right. You have three and a half years to put a property in tax title.
So you actually lose that, that opportunity.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Yep. So you need to be more aggressive according to DOR.
Gotta get tougher, right?
Right.
You have to wear a different hat sometimes.
Okay, when property goes up to auction, I just wondered if town-owned lands or those kinds of things, if you've been, should we be talking with planning and the like for the possibility of the value of the land for economic development and that kind of thing?
Well, last time I was here, what, ten months ago?
Yeah.
I had given you like fifteen properties?
Yeah.
That I thought might be good to auction, but I hadn't heard anything back.
Yeah, I made that note.
Okay.
I made that note that that.
Maybe we need to put that as a future agenda item.
This hasn't.
I'll get those.
There was like fifteen of them.
We haven't acted on that list.
Okay.
I made that note.
Okay.
Yeah.
But when you do, we can have an auction, you know?
But I think we need to look at the commercial value and potential, you know, properties.
Right, to do something else with it, yeah.
And I think that's something that the new administrator would be, have some sort of specialty in, we're hoping.
That would be nice.
And that type of stuff to direct whoever needs to be directed and into the right direction.
Mm-hmm. Check with all the different departments, planning, all of them.
Uh-huh. And that, and do all that coordinating.
Yep.
That's gonna be part of, it's part of our goal, anyway.
Yep. Okay.
So FinCom, this is your recommendation on the end?
No.
No, this is not final on the end.
It's not final.
Oh, because I know we're waiting for the schools and other variables.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
There's a deputy collector position right here.
That's a vendor. It's an outside vendor.
Yeah.
It's an outside vendor.
Yes, yeah.
Is, is the whole, whole department, about thirty thousand dollars.
I think what you have, Rich, set up here, because this is being taped, right?
Yeah.
Well, we also increased, um.
Would you mind sitting up here so people in the town can hear what you, because we're gonna be asking you all sorts of questions with the budget, if you don't mind?
We also increased the tax title line item.
Mm-hmm, yep.
For the fees.
You were asking about the deputy collector?
Yes, that was the question I had.
That's the new one. Is that Kelly and Ryan?
That's Kelly and Ryan, yeah.
Do we currently use them?
We do. The way we do it, half the towns do it one way, half the towns do it another. We, they come every Tuesday, they pick up from us, they put it in their account, and then they write us a check.
Yep.
The DOR doesn't like that. They like it the opposite. They want Kelly and Ryan to deposit into our account and to invoice us, and we pay them. So I needed ten thousand in vendor line item.
Okay, all right.
And I asked for their last two years.
Mm-hmm.
And ten thousand was.
So this is a one-time expense, kind of like a revolving, I think you're calling it a revolving fund, right?
Ultimately, it's a wash.
Yeah.
It's just the way the bookkeeping is done.
It's the way the DOR likes it done.
They want us.
Probably the money up.
They want us to front the money.
Yeah.
And that was in the report?
Yes.
For collection.
They wanna go through the voucher system, which we don't right now.
Okay.
Some towns do, some towns don't. I've talked to a lot of different people, but that's what DOR wants.
Okay, so that was the DOR recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
I know they had a few things in your department that they wanted looked at. Well, I can say, at least me, and I know we're gonna sit down with finance later, I don't have a problem with the increase of hours. I think, you know, I think there's a need, I think there was always a need, but restraints as far as the raise, again, I think that, for me, it comes down to, you know, at the end, what does our whole budget look like, and how can we accommodate?
Absolutely.
Across the board to all of our employees, so non-contract and union, just putting that out there now. So, at least, you know where I stand on, on that item.
Do you wanna go from, what, thirty-eight?
Sorry.
Thirty-four?
Thirty to thirty-four. And nineteen, sixteen to nineteen.
There's a nine thousand dollar increase total for the, for that whole office.
How would, how would you go to measure success?
Yeah, the success actually is gonna take a while, actually. It takes a long time for, like, we'll not see the success maybe for two or three years. Throwing these in tax title and in land court takes a while. Then we'll get them cleared, we'll have deeds to own these properties, and then we can auction them off. It's gonna take a while. It's not instant.
Okay, I'm looking at it from, from the townspeople. They're gonna see a big increase here.
Mm-hmm.
And they, they're gonna have to get a comfort zone to say, okay, what are we getting for that big increase here on it? And I'm not shooting it down or anything, I just wanna make sure that we're able to measure some sort of a, of a plan, against a plan, saying, this is what we're going to do to improve the operation of the office, to clear up some of these properties. So a year from now, we'll say, this is what we did as we're moving on this path to, to write things. I wanna be able to have something that's quantifiable, you know?
No, exactly, yeah.
He's looking for the end result. What's the end result?
Right, I mean, I can see a year from now, we'll have.
I know the end is way out here, but.
Exactly, that's the, in a year, I could have.
This is what we did, and we're.
Yeah, I mean, I could say, I could say I have.
It's accountability and tracking progress. And Mr. Cravelo put me under the gun at a, I attended a select board meeting, and he asked me if the board of selectmen have given you any guidance in this regard. And I threw up my hand and said, no. But the DOR indicates that advises a couple of things, you know, meeting with the tax title attorneys.
Yeah, I already did, yeah.
And quarterly report.
Mm-hmm.
Perhaps, you know, as we go along, or as the board goes along.
Yeah, I can fill you in on what's we have.
We could schedule.
What's happening with the tax title and low value, all that.
What kind of progress being made?
That's perfect, yeah. We could do that. Can tell you which ones are in land court, how far they've gotten, how, you know, I can get, because I get reports from my tax title guy, too. He sends quarterly reports. Things like that, how many I've had cleared through land of low value, how many I've filed for land of low value, things like that. Keep you updated that way.
At the town meeting, we just gotta make sure that.
Yeah.
That it's explained, that.
No, absolutely.
It's a three-year plan or more.
Yeah, it takes a while.
And at the end of that.
Fortunately, it's not instant, right?
And in three years, in three years, that's eighteen thousand. You gotta, you gotta say, listen, we have the potential of getting back way more than eighteen thousand.
Right, right.
And that'll.
Absolutely.
Pretty much ease the, the board's funds.
Yeah, yeah, ease their pain. Yes, absolutely, I understand.
So what would your, if there was no two and a half, and it was just the increase of hours, do you know the salary rate on that by chance?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't, maybe get it.
Um, I make twenty-five fifty in thirty-four hours. It would go up to forty-four, four sixty-five?
Instead of the forty-five, three fifty?
Yes, that's, because that's with the two percent.
Yeah.
Without the two and a half percent.
Oh, okay.
That's not a lot, that's not a big difference.
Yeah, hers was like five hundred and fifty-something. I figured hers out, I could figure hers out. I just know you. Kind of hourly rate.
It's less than a thousand dollar difference, or a little more than a thousand, I'm sorry.
I don't have any other questions.
No, me neither.
I don't have answers either.
I know. That's okay.
I mean, I, I would, I would entertain the increase in hours, but no problem. And then, as far as the two percent goes, we gotta see how the, all the other things, the school budgets that we're waiting for, and, you know, all the.
Till the final numbers come in, yeah.
The key numbers that we're waiting on, you know?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, if it was, if it was that easy, we'd, I think, all five of us would say, sure, let's sign off on that.
I know. One thing at a time.
We know you do your best in there. Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
And it'll be like, where's Waldo? Did you say there's a typo in there?
Yes.
No, or the other one. You have to mind it. So it is where's Waldo? Budget season's up, bye.
Is that the same one I have here, really?
It's a little bit, there's a typo you need to find.
Oh. Let's find it. All right. No, there's a typo in.
There's a typo in this one?
And the one, and the one you already had.
Just the one I had.
Yeah, that one, too. Don't worry about it.
I'll fight you once. Gotcha.
Okay, so whenever you're ready, if you wanna.
Oh, thank you. Well, based on the DOR report, that was what brought this whole topic up, because there are several unknown properties and unlocated properties that DOR had mentioned, which brought up our issue, was that we, on a, on a regular basis, there's projects that come up, there's mapping accuracies or other things that have occurred, mostly attributable, I would think, because of the cut over the years in man-hours. So that's, I mean, that's gonna come up.
So it's a similar problem as the collectors?
In a different way, but yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you look at the map, so you look at it, and it looks fine, and then somebody comes in, or there's a sale going through, and, oh, wait a minute, the lines aren't accurate, or the land area is incorrect, or in some cases, it was recorded at the registry, but it never came here, apparently, or vice versa. A previous assessor put it on the map, but it was never recorded.
Okay.
So, and those things are important, because people are being taxed on that, and they're paid. So you wanna have accurate records. And that's part of the reasons things like unlocatable properties are not always a high priority.
Right.
It's the person that comes in who has a problem, who's paying the taxes, you know, the real-life person who's right there. And there's DOR, things other than the report, there are new mandates. For example, they, well, you, way before, they wanted us to look at the MLS and check for solds, so that we can stay on top of it. We agreed to, well, that was our solution. They wanted the assessor, the assistant assessor to go out and actually inspect the properties myself. And that's just not doable, that's why we hire a contract person. So the, what we did is, we recommended that we'll get the MLS and do that, go over the sales and the solds, and catch things that way. That, again, adds more of a workload. And like, right now, they're, they're proposing several changes with certification. On the one hand, they might go from three years to five years, but on the other, they want us to do more of it. Like, they usually have a rep that comes out and asks questions, gets all the information, and then does all the entering. And now they're running a pilot program where they want to try the assessors to do that. So based on that, it was, the point was, yes, we can do the unlocatables, and, but that doesn't address all the projects, all the issues that come up. And like, right now, there's twenty-eight to thirty hours put in weekly, and that's not covering that.
Okay. So, that's, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, no, I just, I'm just looking at the, at the increase, and it's large, and, well, we're not arguing that that work is there, because it's gotta be justified here and on the town meeting floor, as we told Lisa.
The idea is that, you know, being part of the finance group of departments, it starts with the assessors.
Yep.
The better, the more accurate the records, the better.
It starts at the building department, too, a lot of it.
Exactly.
You know? It all, everything.
You can keep going backwards and.
Almost all departments create revenue in one way, shape, or form, I noticed.
Well, it's been a great improvement, speaking of the building department, now that we, I can access the records and just pull them off, and then enter it onto the camera system, that really helps a lot.
In your purview, what are the three specific top priorities, the projects that should be addressed?
That's it.
That you, you need to address in your office?
Well, most of it is like on a day-to-day basis. Those, that's, everything that I do on a daily basis is where the issues come up, that I need research. And so those are prioritized first, because there's actually people that need results.
So you're saying lack of research, not enough research time?
I don't have time to do that. I'm trying to quickly get those out, because there's a sale pending, and all of a sudden, they realize that the lot lines aren't accurate. And so we have to go back and find out where it was, how to, because I can't just go and change them, even if I know it's right, I have to go back and make sure where it came on, have the mapping company put it on their maps once I find it, you know, find the right deed, and make sure that the deeds now are going to reflect the correct information.
So if I understand right, then you're, what you're saying is, when these unplanned scenarios come up, it limits you from getting your day-to-day stuff?
Right. Because those types of things I need to take time out to do. Something like the unlocatable, there's nobody that's there, no live person waiting for anything, nobody paying taxes on something that's, they maybe shouldn't have to be paying on.
Okay.
What else is there?
And they're all revenue-based items, basically?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, we don't make money per se, so we can't quantify the dollars amounts, because that's, we don't collect anything. But that's what starts it. So if they're, if they're paying a little bit more than they should be, or if they're trying to sell a property and something's not right, we have an obligation to make sure that it is right, so that they're paying the correct amount, and then it's fair.
Is there any difficulty with the Patriot site? I couldn't get on it today, and then the tax rate on the assessors.
Are you talking about the website?
Yeah.
I don't really control that. We, we have that Patriot twice a, twice a year. They update it. So it should've been updated, I called them, it was right after the actuals went out.
The link didn't work today.
Okay, well.
And then the tax rate listed on the bottom of the page is sixteen dollars.
On the actual?
Yeah, on the actual page. Sixteen dollars.
Okay, that was supposed to change, because I, I put in the sheet with the corrections on it. And I thought it would've looked all right, but I guess it didn't. Listen, how, could that, like, when they do any of the other updates, would that? No, because they don't touch that. Okay. Because our, our town website has the accurate tax rate.
Not today.
Not today. Because it was like two weeks ago, I looked at our, our individual page, the, the.
Yeah, you're.
The assessor's page.
Yeah, the one, the page you'll land on when you click assessors.
Okay, I'll have to check that, because when I checked, it was okay. So you're talking about not the specific page of the, the assessor's page, you're talking about the camera system cards, the actual property cards?
No, no.
Yeah.
You can't even get there.
You can't get there at all?
No.
Okay.
It could be a glitch in Patriot, their server or something.
Check that tax rate.
So, so my question is, this change from twenty-one thousand to thirty-seven thousand is reflective in change in hourly?
Hours and hours.
So, okay, so it's looking to increase hours to what?
Well, we would put in for forty hours, like, that was.
Forty hours?
Yeah. That was.
And a percentage increase on top of that?
From sixteen thirty-seven to eighteen. We had put that in like three years ago now.
Sixteen thirty-seven to eighteen dollars per hour.
So it's the same thing that we've been trying to do.
Fifteen thousand something dollar raise.
Huh?
That's like fifteen thousand and change.
But that was the same thing we put in for the last, to bring it up to.
So my, my, oh.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. My other question is, because I'm not sure I can fully support that. I do, I do believe in an hourly increase, I mean, hour increase, because I know there is a lot of work over there. And I know in years past, when we had the cuts, everybody took a hit in hours. So I do agree. Is there any way that there could be a clerical to help support some of those other things that doesn't, you know what I mean? If we had a, I know you're the assistant, so we wouldn't have another assistant, but maybe someone who is clerical, part-time, to do some of the other stuff, so that you could invest your, your five hours that you talk about putting towards other projects that would free you up from being interrupted at the window and things of that sort. Just, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't need an answer tonight. I'm just saying, you know, I can't, I, I can't go from twenty-five hours to forty hours. It's a big jump for me.
Right, I mean, right now, it's basically average of twelve, thirty, twenty to thirty hours.
And where the, you know, where your rate of pay is sixteen thirty-seven now, you know, a part-time, you know, clerical is nine to thirteen fifty, you know, someone to you know, clerical is nine to thirteen fifty, you know, someone to just, I think it might be a possibility, I don't know. You would know how that department works, and the board could discuss it, but that's something I would be open to maybe listening to.
Part of it was to bring it up to what some of the other departments of that same level would be doing, are getting, whether it's the police clerical or the finance or whatever, to bring it to that same, or similar level. Since the responsibilities are there, as opposed to. We did have, one year you gave us, I don't remember how many hours was it, do you remember? Although, there was clerical money put in for the different departments. Not last year, the year bef, not this last year, I think it was the year before. So for filing and stuff, that, that's not even, I mean, I put that aside, like, to file all the cards into the, that, that goes last. So that's, you know, we had to catch up the balance of that, so that was used, that clerical amount.
So you had five hundred dollars in there?
Yeah.
At four fifteen.
So we, we did use that to do all the filing and that type of stuff, where it was no, no knowledge was really needed as far as answering questions when they come to the counter and that type of thing, so.
No, I think, and I didn't, I actually had clerical as a possibility before I even saw the, the old clerical line item. You know, to give some support, to take some things off of you. And I'm sure there's some things in there that they could, they could learn to do. Besides the regular, you know, you know, kind of the lower and easier things that you might not have to, like I said, it's just something I'm throwing out there. Whatever, you know, the, your board decides to do, and then finance, and, but I think it's maybe an option to look at. Just because, like I said, I can't, I cannot back the fifteen hours increase per week at this time.
Would you be giving up the, the clerical stipend on the planning board?
I haven't.
Well, if this went to forty hours, would you?
Totally different department.
Well, I know, I just, but it's, that becomes a forty-two hour week, I believe, then, at that point, right?
Well, yeah, that one's not really by hours, it's, it's kind of, there's your meeting and all the follow-up that goes along with it. It's, it's-
Okay.
Stipend.
It's a stipend, yeah.
Okay, all right.
That means probably more than two hours. The increase was because we had already requested before, based on studies that we did with surrounding towns that were similar size or similar population-wise, and other departments within this town. So it didn't seem like it was extraordinary. It's what, three years now, I think we've, this is the third year that we've tried to bring it to that same amount. We haven't up that amount, we're just trying to bring it to where it's a little more equitable with the others.
Chairman, is there a performance evaluation that's done on town employees on an annual basis? For each employee on the, to, is there goals established at the beginning of the performance period?
It's rather subjective.
Yes.
I mean, if we go up to that amount of hours, I'd like to see what's gonna be accomplished for a given year, and then measure that, that performance during the year.
Well, that's what we do. That's what the whole, the multiple page.
But that specifically doesn't-
No, it doesn't address the goals that each person sets for themselves for a year, which you typically, you do in other-
Usually that's established with the department.
Right, but if we're gonna make that kind of an investment, you'd wanna have something to measure the return on that investment after a year, and see if-
That's in the job description, I think, for the administrator, so, so to speak.
For the administrator, but not the other employees, right?
No, I think for the-
For the administrator to set goals and objectives for-
With department heads.
With the department heads.
That they're, that are under them.
Right.
Elective ones, as we know, huh? You can't do anything about elective.
Oh, I understand the elective ones. I've fought too well. Okay.
I think the town has to change the evaluation system.
Yes.
Because it's subjective, not objective.
Well, yeah, and that's the thing, if we make these investments in, in these departments, and then a year from now, we're no further ahead in terms of resolving some of the problems, and-
Well, I, so, I mean, I don't, my, my thought is, you know, go to ten hours this year and and work our way to the fifteen. And it's because of money, it's not because of your performance.
No, and basically, I, I kind of do it like a salary position, basically, because you try to get in the hours that you need to at least get to where it's being covered.
Does your workload have ebbs and flows through the year?
The worst times would be the tax time, like, the fall, and the preliminary, but the fall more so than. And when, you know, like, when we have the inspections, when I get the guy to come out, it goes up a little, because I have to, there's only certain times of the year I can get him to come out. Like, we're doing cyclicals now. Speaking of which, DOR, I'd mentioned that. We do have a cyclical program. I don't know how formalized it is. But when we get them, and usually that's in the spring, because that's right before we start preliminaries. We do about, average of twelve percent to stay on top of it, give or take some. This year, we didn't have that many that we needed to catch up with, so we're trying to catch up more with the building permits and closing them out, that type of thing.
I just, I'm, I shouldn't say I'm afraid, but I'm kind of afraid to present that much of an increase on a town meeting floor this. I mean, years have passed that we, we have put things like that up, and they just write over it, they vote for it. It's fine, but you never know what.
Right.
And like I said, we're not saying you don't deserve or, or need the hours, but-
I just think, you know, there's a lot of things that need to be still brought up, to, you know, like, the personal property. That's a bigger project than I even thought, because it's a lot of work to get everybody on there. There's new people, but all of that benefits the taxpayer, because it makes it more fair across the board for everybody. It's not something you see visibly, but if there's a problem, they're there.
No, I, I understand that, yeah. We're obviously gonna work to give every department every possible tool we can give them, and, you know, but we're constricted by the amount of money that the budget has given us for the year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just point out, if, if the board goes back seven, eight, nine, ten years, you'll find the hours of that office, they had a thirty-hour a week assistant assessor and an eighteen-hour a week clerical person. And the salaries were-
I knew there was a person and a half, I wasn't sure what the hours were.
Yeah, the salaries were well over forty-five thousand combined.
Yeah. Now, in seven years, huh?
Yeah, yeah, things have increased. And, I mean, even the DOR, things that they want us to do, we, we just don't do a mailing, they want us to make sure that we increase, like, the income and expense ones, so we need to keep a logbook of what went out, and to encourage a bigger response.
Yeah.
So we have to come up with ingenious ways of encouraging people to respond to those. But they, they keep wanting, each year they come up with new directives to keep it a little bit more, but they don't provide them.
Well, I don't have, I don't have any more questions. I mean, this, we've explained it well in the budget here.
I don't have any other questions. I know that we're gonna have to get with FINCOM, we're gonna have to talk. The assessors may wanna talk and either, you know, continue the presentation or come in, maybe when that discussion takes place to, you know, get our brains around this and see what can work. It's, there's no doubt, I mean, the town used to have a private assessor that came in how many hours a week, and like Helen said, we had an assistant assessor, a clerk, you know, in times where times were good, and then times that lean and-
Went down to, what was it, eighteen hours, or I think it was something like that.
No, those were terrible times.
I think we end up paying for it, so to speak.
No, and, and there's a lot of catch-up, and there's no doubt about that. But, you know, we're also have our hands tied with budget and what we're expected to pay on other levels, and guarantees and mandates, and and then we have to go the rest of the way, so, like I said, as far as the two percent, any raises, I'm holding off to the very end to see what things look like. I do increase, agree with an increase of our pay, but I, I can't support the forty, and I would be open to looking at maybe some clerical work assistance for you. I would be open to that. That's where I stand.
I would agree with that.
I guess maybe we'll let you know, are we gonna meet with FINCOM and go over all, like, would, that would be a topic?
Actually.
I know we have a, I don't have it now, but-
The thirtieth.
We're meeting with them to go over-
With FINCOM and the schools, what?
The schools are first, and I think one is at six, one at six-thirty?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. So it wouldn't be until later. Maybe get yourself on the agenda for that evening for a certain time spot?
March thirty.
Hmm?
March thirty.
Yeah.
You know, if that's something we need to come back and-
April sixth, I think the board is also, I mean, April sixth, the selectmen, I think, are meeting joint with FINCOM.
At six-thirty, yeah.
Yeah, it might be a better night.
April sixth.
So maybe get with Helen and get yourself on the agenda, and we can bounce around ideas and thoughts.
The thirtieth could be a long one. So maybe the sixth, April sixth might be. The thirtieth is with the schools also, so that might be a long meeting, and then you'll be sitting there for a long time later. April sixth might be a better option.
What is, what is April sixth? Is that on Monday, right?
Wednesday.
On Wednesday, yeah. And then the next one after that with FINCOM is the twenty-seventh of April, but that's long, too far away.
I don't have any.
I think so, you cover everything.
Those are all good, thanks. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the police chief.
Hi.
Hello.
How was your morning, good?
Good.
No problems?
No, all good.
Glad to hear. Everything got plowed and snowed, no accidents?
No.
No complaints?
It's all good.
All right. Same story, so, as, as the last two, so.
Yeah, I increased my line item by three percent in the salary department. I can get into numbers, I can get into facts, but if it's gonna go the way of the other two, I'm just wasting my time. So I just, what am I gonna do?
No, we know.
I don't think it's right.
Yeah.
I don't think it's fair. But if that's a decision you're gonna make, I'm not gonna waste your time.
Yeah.
I think, Chief, too, because you are contracted with a contract, I think if you wanted to, you know, ask us to reopen that, then that's something-
Oh, I do, that's, that's in ten.
Then that's something we can discuss.
Because, real briefly, I'll, I'll say it real briefly. I started at, can I write these numbers down? I started at sixty-five thousand almost ten years ago. I'm at sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty today. An increase of six point nine percent over two years, with no benefits. That's where I'm at. Police officers have received two percent a year over ten years, totaling twenty percent, with benefits and all the other additional lifers. The range in the personnel code goes from sixty-five to seventy. I'm not even at what you're gonna pay a new chief when he comes in. So I'm not gonna sit here and beg in front of our selectmen. It's not my style. I believe I'm entitled to that raise, just by what I've done, what I've accomplished. That's where I stand. If you look, six point nine percent over ten years, that's point seven six percent per year. What do you want me to say?
All right.
What do you want me to say? Are you wait to the annual meeting?
I'm not gonna argue.
I'm not gonna, it's frustrating, because the other big thing is, in over the ten years, I've never taken medical. And it's been following the on-socket call, I kind of lost that benefit in the city, so now I co-pay. But still cheaper to co-pay there than it is to co-pay here. So I co-pay there. So now my income went down even more, and I don't ask anything more of the town. So for what I've done for the town for almost ten years, and what I've, what I've been paid, I've never been greedy. I've never asked, I think, the first five years, I was at sixty-five thousand, and I gave a raise back. So I, I can't be any more fair than where I am, so I put in for an additional three percent. All right, that's, that's where I stand.
You, a couple of times, you just said-
A lot of times, I, I had a chart before I came in here, but I don't wanna waste your time. I understand the town doesn't have so much money. But I've never asked for a lot of money from this town. And I can show you, year one, sixty-five, year two, sixty-five, year three, sixty-five, year four, sixty-five. I got a two percent raise, I gave it back, year five, sixty-five. Enough, you know, I, I can't keep doing this and not supporting my family.
Can you want to cut to the quick?
Yeah, I've cut to the quick, I put in for the three percent, and that's it.
Okay, would you be amenable to opening a contract, as you mentioned?
Yeah.
It's signing a new contract?
On my presentation, I'd like to do that. The contract allows it to be opened. And I prefer to get the same contract that the police officers just got, two, two, and two, and that, that's okay.
Okay, and that would put you at like seventy-four, I mean, after three years.
After three, and that's fine. We could do that, that's, I'm good with that, and it's still below, and that's okay, though, because I've never been a man to come here and ask for raises or demand raises. You just check the history. I never have.
The question is, does this have to go to town meeting?
Not my contract.
Not his contract?
Line item.
Then, it'll be on the line item, but-
I'll, I'll make the motion then. I'll make that a motion, the chief, open, open the chief's contract.
I'll second that.
Can I have a discussion beforehand?
Yeah.
Just because I like to make sure everything's legal and on the up and up.
Yeah.
Helen, if we, and this might be a question for counsel, but if we open a contract and say nothing gets done, are we opening ourselves up for any type of, I'm just-
Yeah, you don't have to go back to legal. My contract's really, really clear.
I just wanna make sure that if we say we're gonna open up your contract and say the vote is no, I'm sorry, we can't do it.
You don't have to change anything. It's the way it is.
Is because it's legally open, is now there a, you know, do we go to mediation, do we, you know what I'm saying? Because there is a process with things like that. I just wanna make sure, Chief.
I mean, you waste your money going to legal with these questions sometimes. I'm not, if I go to a meeting and you say zero, it's zero. I'm not gonna contest it, never have, never will.
I just wanna make sure, I don't listen, I'm not looking at the person on the paper, I'm looking at the procedure on the paper, and I wanna make sure that everything is fine.
I give you my word, I mean, that's the way it is. If we open negotiations and you say zero, chief, it's zero. Now worry about it the next time we negotiate my contract. Never been like that, never will be like that, whether it's here or somewhere else.
Right.
You couldn't hire a new chief based on what you're paying me right now. I've been here ten years.
Oh, I know.
If that says anything. I understand everyone else deserves a raise as well, I get that.
Yeah.
But, you know, I gotta speak for myself and my family, so it is what it is.
That's fine. I just wanted to ask that question.
All in favor of opening the chief's contract?
Aye.
Aye.
And we can do that, by the way, it doesn't have to be an executive session. You go open it to the public. I don't care.
Right. Okay.
Doesn't matter to me. Wait, wait, hold me. I can, I don't need to have an executive session.
Okay.
Again, you can have, everyone come in and ask me questions, I don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Motion to adjourn, six P M. meeting.
Second.
We can have a buffer.
I don't care, who wants it?
To move.
All right, all in favor?
Bye-bye.
Chief, you hanging around for the narcotics?
I'm gonna use it on myself. I'm gonna use it on myself.
Is Bob coming in tonight, do you know?
I do not know. He asked me what the six o'clock meeting was and I told him. He didn't say he would be here or not, or. And also just to let you know, um, the town accountant did not come in today, so there are no warrants. So he'll probably do those tomorrow, you'll probably have to come in tomorrow.
Okay.
Afternoon, after pro, after two o'clock and sign.
Yep. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining the selectmen at our seven P M. meeting on March twenty-first. Uh, would everyone please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have just a couple announcements. Reminder that the two thousand sixteen dog licenses are available in the town clerk's office. Dogs, dog licenses from the previous year expire on March thirty-first. Reminder to vote at the annual town election, April fourth, at St. Augustine's Church Hall. Voting is from eight A M. to eight P M. If you require an absentee ballot, please contact the town clerk's office. And one more thing is the board of selectmen, uh, wishes everybody to have a wonderful Easter, uh, holiday this weekend. Um, next, uh, approval of minutes of March seventh, two thousand sixteen at seven P M. and all were present.
I'd like the board to accept a meeting from seven, that's seven P M.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The vendor and payroll warrants are not ready for tonight, they'll be ready after two o'clock tomorrow.
Can we have the amount? Do you know the amounts? No, you don't have them in hand, obviously, you'd sign them. Okay.
Invited guests, speakers, presenters, we have none scheduled for this evening. Boards, committees, and department head, we have, um, Ronald Landry, chief of police, and the fire chief. Presentation of police department policy for administering the nasal. Nacum, that's it. And, and some discussion following. Now, so last meeting, chief, we, we tabled it to tonight because we just wanted to make sure you were totally good with it and.
No, I apologize, I just couldn't get here in time.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
There's a national epidemic regarding overdoses. Opiates, they're causing, um, twelve hundred deaths in the Commonwealth this year alone. Governor Baker, E.O.P.S., the attorney general, very instrumental. Now mandating that police officers carry Narcan and administer it. So my officers have been trained and certified to carry it and to administer it. We've written the policy, which is compliant with the E.O.P.S., with a request. So I've given you the policy to review, I've given the policy to the union.
That was my question.
They've had ten days, uh, they had it, they have no issues with the policy. So we're really good to go. In the last year, we've had two overdoses, uh, death resulting in the town of Millville. They're a daily occurrence throughout the state, the Commonwealth. So we have to take that next step and start to administer, administer the drug. It works. There's no liability whatsoever under the Good Samaritan section of the Commonwealth law.
Okay.
So you cannot be held accountable if something would happen. But from what I, from what I know and I understand, it's a safe drug, you can never give too much. It's foolproof, if it works, great, you save a life. But we have to try. So what I did, I purchased only four dosages because they are forty dollars apiece.
Okay.
And have a lifespan of two years. Some departments are buying a kit for every member of their department, which is very costly. So because we still carry D.F.I.B.s, the AEDs, what I did was I purchased these Pelican cases. And I placed the Narcan inside and they're attached to the AEDs. So when you go into the house, you're gonna take the D.F.I.B. anyway. And this is attached to that kit. I purchased a clear one, so the officers can look inside and know it's there.
Yeah.
And this is what it is. It's, you, you administrate it, administrate in the nasal cavity. One in each nasal, and it works, or it doesn't work. Can't give too much, even if the person's not overdosed on, on an opioid, it has no effect on them whatsoever in a negative way.
Okay.
So it's a home run for, um, the person who needs it. And once, once again, there's no liability to the town, we've been properly trained, so we're ready to carry it. And I think it's a, it's a good thing, hopefully we save some lives. Uh, we have had the chance to use it on the fire side a couple of times. So I think we're going to use it more often because we get there first, well before the inwards. So the bottom line is we really need to carry it. And that's why you have the policy in front of you tonight.
Okay. Okay, and that's the same policy they use in the across the state?
It is. All of our policies.
That was one of our other questions.
No, all of our policies are certified by Mass. Chief of Police Association, they're all accredited, the policies. Uh, we've been practicing that for the last ten years now. So they're as good as it gets.
Okay.
And there's really no questions. And that's it, so if you have any questions.
You know, my question was, where did it come from? And I assumed, I can assume where it comes from. But I need to ask the question and then the other part was, um, because it was a union, I wanted to be sure we were clear on that. I think that was the only question I had in regards to, so I'm good, you've answered my question.
This is good. Once again, we're one of the departments, we're quick on things at the forefront of most new developments, that's why we've got it going. So the signed policy will be in place tomorrow.
Okay.
Motion to vote to approve the policy?
I'll second that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roland, can I speak, go to a few other things, is still my time to speak on the departments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The shed is going to be delivered the second week in November. If you take a look, I'm sorry, April.
Oh, okay.
If you take a look behind Town Hall.
Yep.
We took the time to clear that piece of property, which is town property.
Yep, I looked at it, it looks good.
Grated, we placed stone, so we have the proper place for it. If you take a good look, what I also did was create a beautiful driveway for Seventeen Fletcher, which is our property. So I spoke to Helen and I would advise the town to properly post that property as Millville property.
The left side of that landscape timber.
If you look at the landscape timbers to the left of where the shed is going.
There's all hours.
Parking on the side of the shed.
Okay.
So I had to separate it, but now when you look at it, it looks like that property to the right is for Seventeen Fletcher. So the house is for sale.
Yep.
It hasn't been purchased yet. So it's a good idea, I would think, to take action now to define that property as town property. Before somebody buys it and think they have their own driveway.
Right.
The right of way for that property is in front of the house, directly through Fletcher. Not the parking lot of Town Hall.
Okay.
All that property is town property, so you may wanna look into it. I think you should do something because whoever buys the property is gonna think it's their property.
You mean like flag it?
Sign, signage.
Some signage.
If you wanna take a good look at it when you leave, you see the markers? And if I was buying the house, I would assume that's my driveway and it's not.
Okay.
So what would you like to do?
Yeah, probably have to put some signs.
Yeah, that's a big thing.
So, hold on, Fletcher went through.
Correct.
And then the school lot, and then they always just used it.
Correct.
So where would their right of way actually be?
No, it's, it's over here.
Is it to the right of Canoy's house?
Between the two houses over here?
Yeah. And you, you see it says private drive, if you look, it says private drive, it goes straight.
Well, that says private drive because people would park.
No, that's where it goes, straight.
That's where it would go, but.
I don't see a problem with them using the property.
No.
As long as they know it's our property.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause it looks like it's their own driveway now.
And so they could park essentially up to the edge, is what you're saying?
No, they can pull in.
Pull in, well, they're pulling in anyways from that.
Yes, and it's still our property.
As long as they go over and park onto their property.
Basically, as long as they don't obstruct our parking and traffic and.
Before, they were parking in the parking lot.
Where the landscape timbers were.
Of the four, five, no, at the top.
On the top, yeah, I remember that.
Helen places signs, there were four or five cars, so we spoke to them and said, you can't park there all the time. So they moved to the direct, which is our property anyway. But since I regraded it in anticipation of the shed, now it looks like their own driveway.
Did you look at their deed by chance?
No, I didn't.
I, I.
I did speak to two neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah, I spoke to the, one of the gentlemen who live in that house.
Uh-huh.
They all agree that the easement is in front.
Is in front, but did they get an easement years later from the town over through the back?
That we'd have to look up.
That we'd have to look up. I'd be interested to see if it's on there. Cause I'm thinking of the people who lived there in years past and that might have been granted, or it might have just been, hey, no problem, go ahead. That could be it too.
Yep.
It's funny, cause where I work, we park in a church parking lot and there's literally a huge sign that says, town property begins here and it has an arrow. Because they must have run into the same kind of issue with parking of some sort.
Yeah, the point is if we don't take any action whatsoever, you know, five, ten years down the road, there could be an issue.
Well, I think, I think this board and the town has.
Issue like that.
I was gonna say, has taken, has.
That walk path there.
Exactly right, so I think you have to do something to define town property.
But I think we need to see if there was an easement given at some point in time over that back lot. Because they may have, um, when Mrs. Joanna's lived there. So I'd like to see that. I mean, I don't wanna just, I don't have a problem with them driving through, that's my thing. I don't wanna disturb these people's yards and driveways with a, you know, I mean, but it's something we need to just make sure.
If we ever relocated Town Hall or another building back there, they were certainly at a point that we allowed them to use our property for years. Then maybe there'd be a problem.
Yeah.
So I think now's the time to take action, cause it's for sale. And it's not, it hasn't been purchased yet, so now's the time to act.
Okay.
At least define it by signage.
Yep.
Okay, so that was one issue. Two grants, uh, we put in for a, a new piece of fire equipment, it's a brush truck, it's about two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. Keeping our fingers crossed if we get that. But more importantly, there's a new grant for a school resource officer to fund the part-time school resource officer. We have one, Officer Shepard, he's very good at what he does. So if I can get him in the school, I'll have to speak to the administration as well. If we can get him there four hours a day and they compensate us for it.
Yeah.
Meaning the grant.
Yeah.
It'll be a win. He'll be there, uh, we can backfill his shift through the grant, it won't cost us any money.
Okay.
So we'll try for that. I just want you to be aware of that, we'll start writing that one tomorrow. So try to get that one too.
Okay.
So besides that, uh, the mule did come in, it's, uh, it's a great piece of equipment, if you haven't seen it yet, it's in the fire department. It's gonna be moved to the new shed slash garage in a couple of weeks. So a lot of equipment is gonna go into that shed, it's twelve by thirty, it was quite large. And let everyone know, we purchased that shed and the mule without a dime of town revenue. Uh, we got it through grants and private donations, so roughly twenty thousand dollars, so, um, we didn't spend any more town money.
Chief, are, are cameras on our building within the view of that shed also?
Yes, but I'm gonna change the camera because you can get a pretty good view of the shed, but not very close.
Okay.
So I'm gonna get more of a, um, a camera that zooms, so we get a pretty good shot.
Okay.
The front of the shed has a garage door and there's no windows. I ordered the shed with no windows.
Right.
So.
There's no chance of.
There's no chance of breaking in, other than the front door.
How's the light back there?
Well, what we're going to do, for us, it's garage, um, the lease ends March thirty-first. We do have a service, electrical service there. I'd like to move the service to the pole where the shed is and bring electricity into the two sheds, so we have light in both sheds. So that cost is minimal to do that.
Yeah.
It's like twelve dollars a month, have the service there anyway.
Yeah.
That way we could have some chargers on the batteries, we could have the lights, we could have some plugs.
Would that come in via a pole?
Yeah, there's a pole already there.
There's a pole there.
Yep. Drop, the drop will come right down.
Or you can get the camera up there?
We're gonna try.
Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Something close to the shed. I mean, people are gonna say.
I'll maybe buy a new system. So we have a fairly new system, we're gonna buy another system, uh, with the next Myogram that comes, comes in.
Okay.
So, so it should be great once it's all, it's gonna be pretty neat when we're all said and done. So that's about it, any questions about anything?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, public forum.
Please, I have one thing I'd like to.
Yeah, yeah.
Check them out.
Yep, sure.
Um, about a week ago, I had a, um, occasion go down the new bike path. And, um, it's quite spectacular, it's really nice, they did a hell of a nice job with the plantings and the grass and all that type of stuff. Uh, the unfortunate thing is that, uh, some folks have already found, found fit to start spray painting the fences. Uh, with some unsavory words that would not be very nice for people who would wish to come here and to take advantage of the bike path. Um, I don't know what you're gonna do about that, but I thought I'd at least mention it, uh, because I have my little granddaughter and kids with me and that wasn't very pleasant. Uh, additionally, there are numbers of, uh, bottles, cans, papers that are starting to be thrown. Okay, so, you know, if, if we. Okay, so, you know, if, if we, if we are trying to get to the situation where we can get the people to come to our town to hopefully develop our center and things like that, we gotta keep that bike path as clean as we can possibly do it, however we figure to do it. So, the only thing I was thinking of, you know, the, uh, Boy Scouts had come and had asked if they could do something with a piece of land here, uh, and be able to utilize that. Just wondering if there's some way you maybe could talk to them, well, you know, turnaround's fair play.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, if it's a once a month activity, just to pick it up so that it looks nice, I would think that would make some sense, as opposed to having it just look unsavory, spray painted and all the other things that you can imagine what's gonna happen to it. Um, that's a hallmark of our town now, it's something we should be proud of.
Yeah.
Uh, it needs to be maintained. It, it just does, otherwise it'll go downhill quickly and it'll be another source of, of, of a sore spot coming in or coming through our town, and I don't want that to happen.
Jerry, I know, um, through the Centennial Committee, we, um, have it on, actually, I think it's on our agenda, uh, for the next meeting, to have a townwide cleanup in April, and we were hoping to reach out to the Boy Scouts, to the Board of Health. We thought with the parade starting and all of the festivities that we wanted to do a clean sweep, so maybe that's something that we could work with them at least to get it done for this year until we can set something up more.
Yeah, I'm looking for some maintenance program on it, because you know what's gonna happen. You know as well as I do, and I was damn, I was damn disappointed, I was just down there, I remember weeks ago, and I go back and it's a mess.
Were you on the Oxbridge side or the Black, uh, going towards Oxbridge or going towards Blackstone?
I went down towards the Oxbridge side.
The Tressel? Oh, Oxbridge.
Yeah, I went down the Oxbridge side, now there's a, there's a fence along there, um, that, that's right against the, where the bike path is.
Yeah.
And someone has sought fit to, uh, spray paint some things on that that are not very savory. Um, and I just thought that, you know, if we're gonna have some sort of way that it needs to be maintained, not just, and I, I agree that it needs to be done, obviously, for the anniversary. But I think you need to come up with some sort of a quid pro quo, if you must, with the Boy Scouts and say, hey, we'll do this if you do that, or the Girl Scouts can do this if we do that. Maybe have a rotate and do some specific responsibility.
We'd have to find from the DCR what their maintenance plan is.
I gotta, I gotta respond to your concerns.
Go ahead.
Um, the fence is owned by DCR currently, they made a few people unhappy when they installed that fence, to be frank. That's when the damage occurred, uh, it happened over a year ago. It's, if you read it, it's a lot of taxpayer quotes on it. Uh, their plan is to sandblast the fence when it, a week before it opens, but once they finish, they leave. And then it's gonna be more or less our responsibility, so addressing another, one of your concerns, the fire department, uh, we've been speaking, they'd like to adopt that section of the bikeway.
Good.
From Blackstone to Oxbridge, and they were gonna be responsible for an occasional litter patrol with the mule.
Okay.
Set up with a dump cot.
That was one of my.
We've, we've got that in the works now for a while. So, if the plans go through, the fire department, they'll be there in a weekly or bi-weekly.
And is that something that, I was, one of my questions was gonna be to Jennifer's statement of there being a cleanup day. Could we utilize the mule down, up and down the bike path for that day?
But we, we spoke about purchasing, uh, trash cans and installing them, the permanent ones, the heavy ones, keep it knocked over. And they would empty those trash cans on a regular basis and go up and down the bike trail.
Alright.
So, that was gonna eliminate that concern. The fence, they're gonna sandblast the fence, bring it back to the original, uh, face. Like I said, I believe we know who did it, those people have moved away.
Okay.
And it hasn't been any additional damage since then.
Okay.
So, I, not that it's gonna recur, anyone can walk by with a spray can, but the more people that use the bikeway, the less chance of vandalism, because there's somebody on the bike track.
Right.
Right now, it's technically not open, but it's not.
There's a lot of people using it.
There's a lot of traffic.
There's so many people using it, they can't prohibit, I mean, they'd be calling me every day.
Yeah.
So, it's unofficially not open, uh, but when it opens, I think you're gonna have so many people on the bike trail that you're not gonna see that type of damage. But you can see it, it's a fence.
Yeah.
Uh, they should have put a chain link fence, cause you can't spray a chain link fence, but when they installed that type of fence, I spoke to them, I asked them to install a chain link fence, but they chose to install a seat fence, which will probably rot in five years, and they don't come back to replace it.
So, we'll be putting a chain link up.
So, after they put a chain link fence up, it was too late, and so they couldn't do it. So, so all of those concerns, Jerry, um, have been identified and addressed, so I think, uh, with the, with the fire department adopting that.
So, maybe the fire department could coordinate with the Boy Scouts to give them community service.
Exactly.
The more you get the kids.
They'll make their job easier.
Exactly, because.
More you get the kids involved, the more you have kids talk to kids who talk to kids. That kinda lessens the opportunity, cause there is spray painting taking place farther down on some rocks.
On the rocks too.
And I just hate to see it happen, it's so, it's so friggin' nice right now, and I'm saying, geez, you know, you just got something nice going through town, and you know, geez, they come down and they're throwing stuff and spraying things, yeah, good lord. So anyways, I just thought I'd bring it up for a forum.
Thank you for your.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public forum? Correspondents, don't have any tonight. We have some appointments and resignations, we have, uh, an unfor, well, they're all, all, all resignations are unfortunate, but this one, this one especially to me anyway. This is, uh, Dear Roland Barrett, it is with great regret that I attended my resignation from the Millville Board of Selectmen effective March thirty first, two thousand sixteen. I am grateful for having had the opportunity to serve on the board of this fine organization for the past five years, and I offer my best wishes for its continued success. Sincerely, Bob Baker, Selectmen. Well, I, I would like to personally thank you for, um, all, all you've done for the town and.
Work is calling, getting more demanding, more demanding stuff.
Nope, understood. We all. And it's, it's a thankless job and, and doesn't pay well, so, and you have to feed your family, we all understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you took.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks. So, um.
Thanks, Jerry. I vote to accept the resignation with regret.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have Conservation Commission, an appointment?
Mr. Chairman, before you jump to the next, um, appointment, would the board like to post the position as being available?
Oh.
The board will now appoint, um, to fill the vacancy.
Right.
So, would you wanna post that position?
Post it.
For the next two weeks maybe, and then put it on for.
Is that in a bylaws? Cause I thought I had to go to town meeting vote.
You can appoint until the next annual town election.
Yeah.
For town, for the Selectmen.
Yeah.
Cause this happened before, when I was on, previously when Mrs. Zahn passed, and it had to go to election. Cause I don't think it's in.
Stayed vacant?
It's, we actually were able to work with it vacant. But we, it would have had gone to town meeting vote, because we don't have anything specific. So, if another board, cause it's elected, the only elected board that we fill is the school committee, and we do that in conjunction with, so, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee meet, but that's a regional agreement on how to fill a vacancy. We don't have a vacancy for a elected position.
Okay, well, we just did one for the planning board, and we've done it for the veterans of Memorial Park as well.
So, you can do it temporarily.
I'll double check, I'm, I'm fairly certain the bylaws allow it, but I will double check.
I would double check it.
I, I thought talking to the attorneys last week, I thought that would be okay too, but.
Yeah, I, I believe it's a temporary appointment until the next town election, but I'll double check just to make sure.
That was my understanding of it. And I might not have just, when we did the others, I might have just.
The bylaws could have changed since back, that was a long time ago.
It was not long ago.
But I will double check, um, if, if it is the case that the board can appoint, do you want me to post the position and then put it on for the next?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, April fifth. Yeah, pending that, uh.
Yeah, please.
I'll make the motion.
Pending that the bylaws allow it.
Right.
Second, anybody?
Can I second?
Yeah. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So, yeah, you're a full voting member till March thirty first at midnight, so. Alright, so next, we have Conservation Commission, appointment, uh, Conservation Commission requests the appointment of the following individual, Jeff Petit, is that correct? Of four forty-two Chestnut Hill Road, to appoint Jeff Petit as a member of the Conservation Commission effective immediately for a period ending June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
So, move.
Second.
Just, just a question.
Yeah.
Mister Petit was, uh, recommended by the.
Conservation Commission, correct.
Yeah, yeah, it says it right, no matter. Alright, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next, uh, is a temporary town clerk, so last, for, oh god, almost two weeks now, I've been on, back and forth on the phone with, um, Lauren Goldberg, the town's attorney, for, uh, election-related issues. And we're, um, both clerk and assistant clerk, um, running for that position. One is running as, as a sticker campaign, one's running on the ballot. It's unethical for either one of them to do any clerical work that has anything to do with the elections, so the election commission, which, uh, Michelle, I can't remember the name of her.
Bassinari.
Bassinari, from, uh, Bill Galvin's office, and our town's attorney, um, told us that to keep the town out of any possible ethical violations is to hire a temporary clerk, which will go through April seventh. And they need normally two or three days after an election to get all the final paperwork off to the state. And then, and then after that, whoever wins the, the job takes over in full charge. And then also, our town clerk is currently, um, on Workman's Comp related, uh, leave right now anyway, so we're shorthanded anyhow. And then Diane Lockwood being on the, on the ballot cannot do anything related to the elections at all, so, uh, we've got this.
What's it do to the town though, but not for the elections?
Yeah, all other really dog licenses and.
Just asking.
Yeah, and all this lady, we, uh, the, uh, Poplin and Page attorney, uh, found this woman, uh, through the, um, town clerk's, uh,
Association.
Association, that is retired, but will come in here, uh, on an on-call basis hourly to run the election for us, to just keep us out of.
That Copeland and Page found her through?
Yes, through the.
The retired.
Yes, so her name is, um, not the lawyer, but the, the lady that would, that is willing to help out is, um, Ellen Gabry, she's a retired town clerk from Auburn, where she served as town clerk for twelve years and assistant clerk for eight. Prior to that, Mrs. Gabry is, um, oh, I'm sorry, eight years prior to the, so she's got twenty years experience in that office, so she's willing to assist the town in accordance with our offer letter, which is on the back, uh, which basically states that she can be terminated at a moment's notice, she's not eligible for any benefits. She's basically a subcontractor, is, is the way we left it. She agreed to the twenty-five, Helen, an hour?
Yes.
Okay, and she's willing to start tomorrow, pending our vote tonight. And, um, cause there's quite a few things that, um, cause Diane Lockwood was instructed, I wanna say last Tuesday, to not do any other work that has anything related to elections, so it's been now almost a week that any work on elections has been done, so. She's got some work to do right out of the gate, but she's not worried, is what she said.
I'll make the motion.
Piece of cake.
I'll make the motion to approve.
So, you wanna read that motion?
I'll second it.
The lawyers just want us to read this motion as it's here.
Bottom of the letter.
You've got it there?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve the, uh, offer letter is prepared and appoint Ellen Gabry as temporary town clerk for the period of March twenty-second through April seventh, two thousand sixteen, to handle all matters relative to the annual town election.
And, um, just so everybody knows, one discussion I wanna have before we go any further with the, with the vote, is I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that it's nothing personal on the clerk or the assistant clerk. It's something that Bill Galvin's office, the Secretary of State, is, is kinda demanding that we do. We don't have to, but it was a kind of a, I'd like you to do this, but I'm really demanding you do it type of thing, so.
No, I think.
Because then we break too many ethic laws.
No, and I think.
I just want the residents to all know that, that, that two ladies in that office do a phenomenal job, and this has nothing to do with that at all. It's only because they're running for the, for the office, and you can't be in charge of your ballot, so.
That's it.
So, I'll second that motion.
One second, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey, Helen, Executive Secretaries report.
Okay, uh, the first item, um, I'd like to talk to the board about is the Assistant Animal Control Officer position. And you should have a memo, um, in front of you regarding that. We've had that position posted now for several weeks locally, uh, we also put it on monster dot com in the telegram and gazette. We only received two applications, neither of those which were viable. The reason for that was both individuals lived at least a half hour away.
Okay.
One lived in southern Rhode Island, one lived in Connecticut.
Okay.
So, um, they've really got to live much closer.
Yeah.
To answer to calls. Um, so the board had voted a couple of weeks ago, um, that if nothing moved, uh, with the position locally, um, that we could speak with the, the town of Blackstone, and with the assistance of, um, Gary Fagan and Chief Landry, we, um, achieved that. The chief in Blackstone does not have any issues with us, um, I hate to say the word using, but I guess employing, um, the assistant of the animal control officer there, his name is Kevin Sullivan. Because Kevin is on call for Blackstone, um, we wouldn't actually have to use or hire him as an employee of Blackstone, we could employ him ourselves.
Okay.
So, that's what I am actually recommending. Um, the only downfall, if you look at it that way, a, a concern on Gary's end, is that, um, Kevin apparently does not have a very good working relationship with Aldridge Street Kennel. So, Gary's concern is that if we do hire Kevin as the assistant, Aldridge Street will no longer be willing to board our animals. In which case, we would use a Blackstone kennel.
And fifteen dollars a day, is that the same?
That's for use of the, that fifteen dollars a day is for the use of the kennel, if we have a dog there.
And, and is that about the same as Aldridge?
Yes, it is, actually, I think Aldridge is actually more, I think they're twenty or twenty-five. But Kevin would be appointed, you know, as the assistant animal control, he would receive the stipend and receive the per-call fee that every other assistant has received in the past.
Same kennel we had a problem with before, Aldridge Street?
Yeah.
Some residents have.
Some residents.
Some residents have.
So, you know what?
The town has.
It's not, it's not a loss, it's, I'm looking at this, I'm saying this is all positive, we can make a little change, it's not a.
My question is, what is Blackstone Kennels? Do they actually have a kennel in Blackstone, or are they?
They have their own town kennel.
They have their own town.
I believe that, um, that Kevin runs for the town.
So, it's kinda like a plus plus in that aspect.
Animals are safe and.
If you wanna take, um, take one and pass, so this is just a, a short letter from the, um, Animal Control Officer to the board, expressing his concern about the kennel.
Step to regionalization.
And it's not much further for us to go to Blackstone Town Hall, uh?
No.
Cause it is to go up ninety-eight, so.
Right, and if, if, um, Mister Sullivan is gonna be the individual here during the day, and he is familiar with Blackstone's kennel, we may just be better off, you know, having him use the kennel he's familiar with.
Yeah.
It eliminates the middle person.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to hire Assistant Control Officer Kevin.
Well, what I would like to do, Mister Lar, I don't mean to interrupt, because he's not on the agenda to be appointed, the motion I'd be looking for is to proceed with this and put him as an appointee on the next agenda.
I make a motion to proceed with the Assistant Animal Control Officer position. I'll second it.
All in favor? We have to send him an offer letter and everything, don't we?
No, they don't receive an offer letter.
Oh, it's just an on-call.
It's a stipend and then the twenty-five dollar on-call, but he would need to fill out the, the application and.
That gets rid of a headache.
Yeah, big headache. All right, great, excellent.
I'm not sure if many of you read the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, that's.
Is that a newspaper?
It is a newspaper.
It's not Google, wait.
Because that's one of the ones we get in the office, that's one of the ones I happen to read. Articles could appear in other papers as well, but because last week was Sunshine Week, having to do with the public records law, there was a big to-do, especially at the Gazette, about the ability of the public to view ethics information at municipalities, and they had a big article in there how they went to nineteen different towns within Worcester County. Millville was not one of them. But what they did was they went to the town clerk's office and asked to see the receipts, you know, those infamous yellow sheets of paper you all get mailed to your homes.
We just got them in the mail.
And to see the certificates of those who've taken the training. So it's not necessarily the state that's coming in to do an audit, we haven't hit that point yet, but there are people out there in newspapers and other media that do check up on municipalities. So, you know, I've brought this up to the board before, I'm struggling trying to get compliance with some of our appointed and elected officials. So I prepared a list for you of those that are in violation.
I had it somewhere.
They're, they, the conflict of interest summary goes out in December with the yellow sheet that needs to be sent back, that's annually, that's every year. And then every other year you have to be recertified and take that online training from municipal officials. So you won't always get a letter saying that your training is up, every other year you'll get that, but every December without fail you should get a letter asking for a receipt to be sent back. So that's the list of individuals who've yet to return it, and we're now three months into the year. Second notices have gone out, and I will, I will say that a handful of people on that list are fairly new employees, so that it could just be a delay in their completing their employment paperwork. But, you know, a lot of the individuals on there have been officials or employees for a while. So my suggestion, and I had brought this up last year, what other towns are doing, and again, it is primarily the town clerk's office that handles this, Millville's a little different in that the executive secretary is handling it, but what most of the town clerks are doing is they're sending a list similar to this to the state ethics office to cover themselves, if you will, to tell the ethics office, look, we did our due diligence, we sent the letters, these individuals are refusing to comply. And if you read that, that newspaper article, it does quote the gentleman who's in charge of the State Ethics Commission, David Giannotti, and he says, he's quoted right in there as saying, it's a state law. If you don't, if you're a municipal employee official and you're not taking the training and you're not signing that receipt, technically you're, you're breaking law. So, and I tried to make that clear, I think a lot of people think this is just something that I like to have or something, I'm not sure, but it's not, not my rule, something that the town needs to comply with, so.
For the next step, she needs to, because if we don't, then.
Yeah, I think some of these two, you know, maybe getting the, because I'm on the list, I'll say it, I'm on the list, I have the papers, it's on the list of things to do. I actually did the ethics because I have to do it for my job, so I do have it. But I'm, I'm horrible with tedious paperwork and I, and, and this is, so that's my, that's not even an excuse, that's just where I am. So anyways, but some of these have one, either a department or a chair, that they're, you know, that we maybe should reach out to those chairs.
We've done that, we've sent to either the department head or the chairman of every board, the list of their individuals.
Some of these are also getting stipends for their positions, so maybe that's something we can talk about, holding up stipends?
I don't think, I don't think we can do that by law, I don't think we can hold that.
I don't know, but it's something to think about, I mean.
Well, you know what?
If we sent out the yellow paper again, what, three weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Part, two weeks ago it was, yeah, two weeks ago. Because ethics, ethics is technically against the individual, it's not against the town. So as long as the town can show that it's done its due diligence.
Yeah.
The fine is going to be on them.
Right.
And I think maybe outlining that fine to them and that the list will be sent at X date.
Yep.
And as long as it's a sufficient enough time for them to rectify, because one is signing a paper and one is doing the online training, which you cannot fail, and maybe that's, maybe, maybe if the, you can't. I mean, they go, you got it wrong, you go back, you read it again, you answer it. So maybe there is a sense of, you know, apprehensiveness about doing it and failing it, to maybe outline that it is a walkthrough tutorial, there is no fail or pass, you able to, you know, maybe lessen the anxiety that people might have going into that.
Pass and fail.
It's pass or fail, no, it's, I mean, it's pass or pass.
That's what I'm saying, but that's what they're.
But that's what, there may be some apprehensive peoples, or maybe they don't have access to a computer, maybe we could make something available for them.
What do you want to do, you want to send another letter to them saying if they don't comply?
Or through their chairs, or through email.
They've already done it through the chairs.
But I'm saying if we say, this is the date we're going to send it to ethics, this is what you need to do, and.
If you don't, you're going to get fined.
And, exactly.
I don't have a problem with that.
But I, I don't think we should just not tell them that this is your, your consequence. I mean, we need to put out what the consequence is for not complying.
That's all.
So, that's just my suggestions.
Well, I think that we should do that one more time.
Okay.
I can put that, I'll make the motion.
One second. I would do the email.
I'm sorry?
Should we just do the email, not email of?
I don't have email addresses for everybody, that's part of the problem.
Maybe if you get the chair, the chair might have them for theirs.
Just because, we're supposed to cross mine, paper, envelopes.
We'll put it in their mailboxes with each of their names on the top, so if it goes to, you know, the Board of Selectmen, then.
We've made two tries for it.
It has their names. Because some of these are, like the school committee members, which I'm sure they might have them on file at the high school, but not here in town. So that's probably just a paperwork oversight, so that's just thinking out loud.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to send a third and final letter that'll outline the fines and explain that it's a walkthrough tutorial, not a pass or fail.
Right, we'll send to the state.
Is there any specific date the board would like to give until, a deadline or?
May first?
Yeah.
May first.
That gives us two meetings.
Yep, okay.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye.
I don't think it's, why do you need like your name's on here, I think you should pass. Just, just yes to.
Well, she's got no financing, Dan.
I understand that, but the thing is.
No, I know what you're saying.
The next item is another one of these mandates. And this one is a little bit less known, but this is the NIMS, the NIMS.
The NIMS.
Training. That certain town officials and employees are required to take, primarily for public safety, primarily police and fire. However, they also do require the inspectors, animal control, highway, emergency management, board of health, and then the administration and finance, so it encompasses everybody that could and would be involved if there were a disaster in town. So I've highlighted in yellow the individuals who, I can't say that they necessarily haven't taken the training, but I do not have proof of such, if they have, they have not given me the certificates.
And this board is responsible only for the one hundred and seven hundred?
Correct, yep, just the first two, so if your name is not highlighted, then you're fine.
I, my name is on, on that list for NIMS, so I've taken both those courses.
So you just can get me copies of those certificates?
And I've also talked to the deputy chief, and the chief was also there. We really, my, my feeling is that we should be more aware of how it would work in the town collectively. And apparently, and we should get some in-town training as well, just to understand, and I was just holding back on that, on, on getting the certificates, but I've taken both courses.
So you mean having somebody come in and do some training rather than just all online or?
No, it, we get an oversight of what, how it would work for Millville, from the deputy chief and perhaps the chief.
I know the chief loves NIMS, so I'm sure he'd be.
Yeah, it's apparent he loves it.
No, I mean, I'll tell you, this is not my forte, and if there is a disaster, you don't want my opinion because I don't know anything about it, I can think logically, but I'm not first in what you do as police and fire and hazmat. And I'm going to sit there with a blank stare and I'm going to take all of your advice and I'm going to go forward with it. So.
I hear you.
Seriously, so I think having that in-town piece, to hear what their plan is, goes beyond just the, how does it work? Now you're applying it to your town and how, and how is it going to affect us when the time comes, rather than when the time comes, we're trying to sort through it. So I agree with that training.
So would you like me to set something like that up for everybody who needs to take it or just people who aren't in compliance?
I think again, getting those people who weren't compliant, who I am one, because I'm really pushing back on taking this, I, I don't feel like I'm qualified to do this, and there's not very many times I say that.
I think first step is clean up, clean up the list and then.
Clean up the list and then have the.
And review.
Yeah, I would do that. Because everyone, everyone needs to be compliant and then, and then.
And my only concern, especially now with this, is that when this was first introduced, I think it was two thousand ten, they were very clear in that you would not be given any federal grants if you weren't in compliance. And I, I think the chief has gotten some, and I, I, I don't think anybody's been rejected, but that's the last thing I was told, and I actually went through my file to see if anything had changed. And they're still saying that there's a chance that if you're not in compliance, you can be looked down on for federal grants, and I know we are going to be looking for some grants, so.
I do remember when we first did this, we did do some training downstairs in the main, main room.
Downstairs and upstairs in the classroom, we had classes too.
A bunch of us were invited to, and we met, and it was around the time of the, the, one of the bird flu epidemic. Really, so we trained for that as well, so.
They've also stepped it up to the requirements in both those courses. So you're going to have to.
It's not a, not a one-on-one, it's a one-on-two class, two-on-one class. Excellent.
All right.
So.
The next item is the Department of Labor report that you all got a copy of. This is, the Department of Labor standards came in and did an analysis of the building, and they had six specific items that they required correction on, four of which were things I dealt with as facility manager. Two of those items were specific to the highway department. I just received today one of the items completed. The last item is still outstanding, and I'm waiting for that to be completed from the highway department. This report was due back the twenty-ninth of February, so I'm not sure if the board wants me to hold it and wait for compliance from the highway department, or if you want me to send it incomplete back to.
What's the last item?
What's the highway?
It was number six, it was, the highway department employees need to be trained on the use of fire extinguishers because they dispense gas, gasoline with the equipment that they use.
And that's all we're waiting for, is that one?
We just, we just, oh, you did.
Trained the highway department, okay, can I get some type of, something in writing that, because they require proof.
We did Thursday.
Oh, good, okay.
All right, so, and then that'll complete that report?
Beautiful.
Just that?
Yep, and then we can send that back.
All right, well, yeah, let's send it back. Excellent.
The town hall building structure, as I emailed you last week, we had, I think it was last Wednesday, the engineer from Cambridge came in again, the same engineers we had here last year that were appointed by the insurance company because we noticed an additional crack going up this long staircase here. My opinion, a fairly significant crack that I had some concerns about. So he did come in, the initial impression I got from his visit, and the two firefighters were here as well, Deputy Chief Furno and Danny, and Chief Landry was here for a bit as well, he seemed concerned. They were up in the attic and I heard some chatter about, oh, you know, significant deterioration since the last time and. We had a conversation outside afterwards, he seemed very concerned, especially with any snow loads on the roof. I had explained to him that it's really impossible for us to clear snow off of the roof. We tried last year with the winter that we had, we even called National Grid, Verizon, tree companies, the chief helped, you know, with, tried to help with the ladder truck, but because of the pitch of the roof, it's impossible to clean it. So there's really no way to clean it. What they're saying is it cannot hold the weight of more than a foot and a half of snow. So that's where it stood last year. I was under the impression from his recent visit that it was going to be much worse, but he went back to his office and he compared last week's pictures with last year's pictures, and he emailed me on Friday saying that it looks to be the same. There is no further deterioration. So that's good news, however, he did remind us, as you see in that email, that, you know, if there's a foot and a half of snow, it's not going to be safe. So he really emphasized last week when he was here, that the board needs to start thinking about relocating. He didn't come out and say it, I certainly don't want to put words in the gentleman's mouth, but I, I think he was implying that being here through another winter, you know, if it's, if it's a bad winter like last winter.
Could be risky.
Could be risky. So, that is where that stands. I was actually very confused on Friday when I got that email, and I, I actually communicated with the deputy chief because I thought perhaps I misunderstood, but Steve Furno said, no, that, that is what he said. He said that there was significant deterioration from last year, so, you know, I actually would like to recommend, and I would like to have a second opinion done, I would actually like to call in a second engineering company, but I know that's going to be more money for the town, and I know we don't have that to spend right now, but I just want to get it out there and on the record that I do have concerns. And I know the staff is nervous. Couple of weeks ago when we had the heavy winds, I mean, some of the noises we're hearing, we've never heard before. So, you know, to me, something is going on on the second floor up in that attic.
Well, he was up there, Helen. Well, he was up there, Helen, and he's a certified engineer.
You're right, he is.
And he put his stamp on it, so.
So that is, that's that update. I just wanted to let you know. The board had asked, Mrs. Wing had asked about some minutes that she had read from the school committee. And I did check with Superintendent Himmelberger. And he said he's going to drop off a written update for the board with respect to the roof. He said he's waiting to finish up and close out a few things with MSBA, and then he's gonna get back to me on that.
Okay, thank you.
The Boy Scout issue has been sent to town council.
That's on Hill Street, you mean?
Yeah, the property that Mr. Denoncor had questioned. She had asked for some backup information, so I had to do some research. And finally found the article in the nineteen sixty-eight annual town report where that was voted. So we sent that to her and I haven't heard back yet. So that still is with town council. I believe she has all the information she needs. And Mr. Denoncor is aware that it's in her, her hands right now, so. I told him I'd get back to him when I heard back from her. And I had sent you all, forwarded you all an email from D O E R. Actually from Colonial Power regarding a conference call with D O E R on Monday at ten AM. And I will not, yeah, next Monday. I will not be here. I'm out Monday and Tuesday. So I didn't know if one of you would be able to take that call or if you would like Colonial to represent the town on that call.
I don't know. My days change by the minute, so. Definitely want Colonial on the call. They're gonna have more answers than we will.
Yeah, I mean, they said if you're already booked, Colonial can take the call on the town's behalf.
I have very limited personal days left, like near noon. So I, I can't at this point take any.
What time is that call at?
It's at ten AM and they anticipate it'll be about an hour. And I'll be, I'll be out of state if I, and I don't think I'll be at a place where I'll be able to really make a phone call at that time, so.
I'll take it. Thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you. How come people do business during the day?
I will forward them your, your home number then. The last issue is actually for Mrs. Wing's centennial. I got the certificate of liability for pyro engineering. And you had indicated in the email, it's the contract that I had received before, but I don't have the contract.
Yeah, oh, I sent it to you. Remember you sent it to the lawyers and then they sent it back?
I don't, see, I don't think I got the version back. Did it have changes or?
No.
Oh, if it had no changes.
It just had the added certificate. They added us to their certificate of liability. That was their big issue. Their big issue was, I'm going off memory, was that we were not listed on the insurance policy. And that was a big thing. The lawyer said, no, we get listed on their insurance as long, along with ours. The other issue they had was.
Payment?
Upfront, but they understood that the nature of something like this, that you, you can't send them an invoice two weeks later for ten thousand dollars. You know, that this is kind of a service. We do have to be billed upfront and that, that was their only reservations that I remember. Because I sent you, I think you actually scanned the contract for me. Because it came in the mail, you sent it to the lawyers, and then she sent back her response, which you then emailed back to me.
See, I don't think I got that. I thought that.
Unless it just came right back to Keith. Actually, Keith is the one in charge.
So, and that, so that contract is the one that Chairman Barrett can sign?
Can sign, yes.
All right, I will find that on my email and then print that out, because I don't have the originals. I must have given you the originals after I scanned it.
The original contract?
Yeah.
I don't think we have the paper copy. I think it just came in email form.
Oh, was it just?
I can't think. I'm not in centennial mail. No, I'm sorry. No, I think it came in via email. I sent it over to you and you got it to the lawyers. That's the way it went. The other company sent their proposal by FedEx. That's what the other one was.
Oh, okay, all right.
I will, I have to go through the email. I'll find it and forward it over to you.
Perfect, okay. And that was it? That's all I have?
Okay, next we have old business. We have overspend, snow and ice budget. So highway providers with, with itemized.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I actually compared that.
Oh, you did. Thank you, Helen. So an itemized expenditure since the beginning of, of, of July first. So. We spent a lot of money on just salt and, and sand. Got sixty-one thousand to northeast for snowplow and sanding. That just is a lot of money considering the amount of snow we didn't get. That's, that was my, the amount of money we spent with Kimball's and Eastern Minerals, we kind of expect to keep the barn full anyway, but. I just, I thought the two towns trucks were gonna keep that sixty-one thousand dollar item a lot smaller, but it looks like we haven't paid out a lot of labor with the towns trucks.
Yeah, but I see a lot of equipment repair and this and that, like for, like for instance, I see annual weather forecast service. Why? Why do we need that?
I don't know. I go on Google.
Exactly. Why do we need that? Why are we spending almost a thousand dollars to go on something that is absolutely, you don't need it? I mean, that's ridiculous. Turn on the TV. I mean, Google it, it'll tell you.
Well, there are some apps, and I, I don't know about this one per se, but I know there are some apps that you can. Notification.
I know exactly how it works. I use it all the time. It's a waste of money. It's a big waste. We, in one of our buildings, we have to use it in order to get paid by one of our brokers.
Right.
Okay, but this town doesn't need to do that. It's, it's, it's a farce, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, turn on the TV, look at your phones that they got now. They do the same damn thing. All this does is, these guys certify certain inches and stuff like that. We don't need that in this town. Nobody questions it with Brian Dunn on that. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm questioning spending that money. I mean, money's tight enough as it is. I don't think we need it. A chute assembly?
There's eighteen hundred in, in repairs to the trucks. I mean, is that from last winter when we backed into some stuff?
Well, I don't know.
We did. I'm just wondering if it's, some of this stuff if it's avoidable.
What else we have? Regrade damaged chalk shed area. How did it get damaged?
That's just truck traffic ripping up the, the driveway.
Twenty-four hundred dollars?
Well, no, I'm not justifying the money. I'm saying what the damage is from. It's just normal.
Oh, I'd like to know, exactly. I'd like to know what they're spending twenty-four hundred dollars on. I mean. And the ice melt they're buying from Koopman? I'd like to see what kind of a price he's getting, what Koopman's charging us for a bag of ice melt, because I know they're not cheap. And work on power equipment. I mean.
Ice melt is seventeen dollars and nine cents.
For a bag?
Yeah, it's over here.
That's ridiculous. I get it for six. Ice melt. The green stuff, that's supposed to be environmentally safe. That's good.
There's been a rumor around that the new plow we bought, the plow the new truck was sold.
Or one, the first one was, yeah.
That's a long time ago, right?
So we're down one plow?
No, 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 no. Insurance took care of it.
The insurance?
Yeah, we replaced it, yep.
That was.
No, you're right, though, they.
Yes, that is correct, but it was.
Took it right out of the yard. They cut the gate open and.
All right, but we still, we've got plows on those trucks again.
Right, and I, I, I understand what Roland's saying. I think we got two trucks. I mean, we didn't have that much snow. And it's just like, I'm sorry, I have a whole, I have a whole big problem with this whole thing. I mean.
I wasn't at the last FIP on the, I was, I was on vacation, but what's the overage right now?
Well, well, just, so we played, we paid the subcontractor sixty-one thousand to snow, to plow and sand.
Our budget was seventy thousand.
Eight, eight, hold on, hold on, Rich. Our trucks were supposed to, the justification for plows and sand is were to save us substantial money.
Oh, I understand.
All right, so we've paid to the contractor sixty-one thousand. We've only paid, saved about twenty-two hundred dollars is what we've paid our employees to do with the two trucks. So eleven hundred per truck. That's not justifying the plow and sand. Eleven hundred per truck is what we've saved and we've spent almost eighteen hundred in repairs. So I'm, numbers is my game, so.
Yeah, so.
That's one thing I'm little with.
Eight thousand dollars budget. So how much are we in the pool right now?
Just under forty.
Forty?
All of forty after today.
Thousand dollars with the total bill.
No, it's gotta be today.
Today. So we're probably just over forty now.
Do we have anybody who's overseeing that contractor during the storm to justify what's going on out there? Who is the highway surveyor out there during a snowstorm watching that storm?
Don't know.
What are you submitting for those?
We don't know, Rich, because he, he, he doesn't answer to us. That's our biggest problem. He don't.
He's not submitting the budget for that either.
Well, I know Mr. Dean was out there because, yeah, I mean, Brad said it. He was like a tail all the time. You turn around, there was John.
Correct, yeah.
You know, and that was great, you know. He was a good watchdog.
So the guy submits a bill and we just pay it without any oversight whatsoever?
That's one of my complaints. So the thing is, is I asked for Brian to come to the board, asking him, can he come to the board to justify some of this stuff?
What he, was he asked to come this evening?
No, I'm not, I'm just saying prior, not this right now.
Okay, no, okay. I just wanna clarify because I didn't know if he was or wasn't.
No, I didn't ask for that, okay? I'm just saying prior, we've asked him. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I wanna hold this, have Brian come in and explain some of this stuff to us, and maybe we can chop some of these numbers, like, do you really need somebody to tell us how much snow we're gonna get?
We need a highway surveyor who's gonna be here during a snowstorm to oversee the contractors, what we need.
The only way you can force that is if it's appointed.
Appointed position. And I tried to do that for three years in a row, to have that changed from elected to appointed, and I got shot down every time. Four years, excuse me. I did it three years.
I'm looking for the fiduciary responsibility. That's what I'm looking at.
Well, can you see the board's frustration over?
And we're just paying it sight unseen. That's wrong.
I don't disagree with you.
I disagree.
I'm not gonna pay this right now. I'm, I'm.
I'm not blaming you guys.
No, but my point is the frustration and it's the townspeople that make it very frustrating for the selectmen to control some of this stuff. And the townspeople's money is, you know, my money, everybody's money, because it's an elected official and he doesn't have to ask anybody but the townspeople. What would you suggest I do? Bring it up again and ask if it can be?
I'm not blaming you.
I'm, I know that, but I'm just saying, we're all frustrated over that.
We still haven't had the budget submission from FY seventeen.
Cool. I don't know what to tell you. He doesn't answer to us. He's an elected official.
Business.
Apparently.
If a full name doesn't work, then it shows back a lot.
Well, I know where he is. But I, I understand your concern. I agree. I know it's not right. What do you suggest this board does?
I'm not suggesting the board do anything. I'm just venting my own frustration.
Well, I'll tell you what I wanna do. I wanna put it back on there, that, the town vote for elected or appointed position again.
Now, it has to go on tonight. Because we gotta close warrant tonight.
Come up with a plan and how it's gonna work after it gets voted in, so the townspeople can support it.
We're gonna have to have.
Not just put it on the.
Guidelines.
We wanna do it. Come up with a plan.
See, and then again, that's another thing that's gonna fall under the administrator's job description because they would oversee appointed officials. That's not exactly how it's worded, but you know, you guys all know, you did it. Yes, so then they'd be accountable daily, not every three years.
I would like to see a weekly report and see what these guys do.
Bingo.
Just like I have to do.
How often do you get these, this submission? Is this the first time you've seen it this year?
Only if we ask Helen. Helen makes it.
My question is, how often do you get this? I know Helen made it, and doing it again.
No, but, no, we don't, it's not like a religious thing where it comes.
Okay, my question is, you have a storm. I've got questions like John does and like Rich does. You have a storm?
Yeah.
After that storm, they have to pay his drivers, right?
No data. He hasn't.
They have to pay the drivers, right? Okay, so he has to have some documentation.
Yes, so the voucher.
Barry, you drove here, I'm gonna pay you two thousand dollars for driving.
Right, and the voucher goes to Mr. Shanahan and then he.
Right, but what I'm saying is after each storm, there should be review of what that is.
Yeah.
You're now, if this is the first time, thanks to Helen, you're receiving this. You're trying to remember whether we had snow back in December or February twelve, but that's really not fair. It really should be as it occurs. You should view it as it occurs, and he should be incumbent to give you it as it occurs. Otherwise, how are you folks gonna remember when it went ice on the road or, or snow on the road? That just doesn't make sense.
So this, this is the thing. So when we get our warrants, when we get our warrants, so we get our payroll, everyone listed in what they, they earn for that, we, we sign off. We get our insurance and deductibles. We sign off on those, and, yep. And then we get our vendor warrants. So all it is is just who's being paid and what the amount is. It will say where that's coming from. So it will say northeast recycling and it will say X dollars. So we get that. So if we wanna know more about that one specific line item, and I've done this before, I've, I've, at a meeting, I flip through and I say, oh, I wanna question this one. I've asked Helen to go back and she will go to the actual voucher that was submitted and then look at that, because that is your detailed report. So each one of those items on there does have a detailed report. They're not here at our meeting when we sign off. Now, is that something we need to change or look at? Maybe.
Well, I, again, I think someone, if I do what you're saying, someone that is accountable not to you folks, I'd probably have to hear. So you can see it, because he's not accountable to you folks, evidently. You're accountable to, to, to the electorate. So I would suggest that someone who is in that station and doesn't feel compelled to even come meet or submit a budget, yeah, I have these frigging bills here. Now, the other folks you have that are doing the correct way of doing it and have an incumbent and put it on the, on the billing and so forth, I have an issue with that unless you find something that's, that's outsourced. But someone who has no responsibility of folks, I would demand he have receipts here, or at least the invoices here with the incumbents should be for those people all the time, because they don't have to report.
Well, see, that's the whole thing, Jerry.
You know, I, I agree with John.
When my contractors work on one certain building, the way it works with me, the way I have it laid out is, he has five trucks. Each truck has a number. Each truck has so many hours he puts in. I get that invoice. Truck number one or fifteen or whatever worked at a certain place, I have it for each building, what the hours they put in. And every, everything is itemized, so it is a check and balance for everything. So if one guy came in here for two hours and all he did was salt it, I have a certain percentage that I pay just for salting, because salting is much different than plowing. Plowing, you get more money, salting, you get less money. And then I, they, they tell me how much salt they used, because I, I don't know the tonnage they use. So everything, the way I have it laid out is, I have a check and balance. So when I give it to the owners of, of, of one of the buildings, he doesn't really have any, anything, no questions. Everything is put out, everything is accountable, and so is the money. We don't have any of that, and that's what, what you're saying. It's, we, we get. We don't have any of that, and that's what, what you're saying, it's, we, we get these bills and it, and there's, there's no, if you look at that, the, at the first page, look at that, and there's nothing, I mean, it's just, I'm not saying Brian's not doing his job, it's just that we get bills, or, or, or the accountant gets bills, but there's nothing justifying what's going on, it's just a lump bill.
Right, so again, I suggest that you would have them brought here, in front of you folks to look at, so at least you can all view them before you say, okay?
Yeah.
I mean, he's, I, I don't, I don't care about all the other departments, that's, that's, I think those departments that, that are appointed by you...
A lot of vendors every month, it's the same process.
Don't disagree, whether it be food or...
This, the snow and ice vendor is different every time.
Yeah, and, and, and he's not responsible other than to the electorate. So I think it, and to answer Jensen's thing, do you think we should have it here on a regular basis? Yeah, 'cause it's the only way you got a check and balance, is drawing this.
And not the contractor, the highway surveyor.
Right, I'm not saying the contractor.
The contractor came in and did all the talking.
Yeah.
I didn't know who was the, uh...
Right, well, the thing is, is, the highway should be saying to the contractor, this is what I want, these are the hours, what trucks did you use, where, give me the numbers, break it all down, so I can give it to and get it paid, we have none of that. He might, we don't. All we have is what Jerry's looking at.
I'm sure Brad's got all that, because he does payroll somehow.
I don't know, I don't know what, how he does it, he does it, but I don't know how he does it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm fairly certain that the, the invoices that Northeast sends to the highway surveyor have attached to it the payroll of the trucks and how many hours they rode, et cetera, and I do know the highway surveyor does look them over before they're processed. He has to sign off on those.
And, and, and these reports, I mean, the, the road repairs is, it would be nice, too, but it's more the snow and ice, 'cause that's a roller coaster. It's never, that's just a crazy...
He, he gets the invoice, but where is he when they're doing it, Roland?
I know, I don't...
Where is he?
And not that we don't trust Brad, but... You still want somebody watching.
Maybe you should say, "Plow, my verroa."
Yeah. Exactly, yeah.
I'm not gonna do it, Brad.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I, I agree, I definitely wish that the town employee section of this was much higher. Now, I don't know the reasoning for that.
Neither do I, but I think it's, that was one of our, that was one of the...
That was the selling point.
Yep, exactly.
On the plow and the sander, I agree, I agree on that.
That was one of the selling points, okay, you're gonna do, so we're gonna be able to put the top down a little bit, to give more to the, to the employees in the town? Not a problem, I think it's great.
Yep.
I'm not saying, I'm seeing it going backwards.
I know we're paying our folks to drive our trucks, much less than we're being charged per truck from, from Brad, I understand that. But I, I just don't see... It, it looks like we're, we're a break even between, by the time we pay insurance, fuel, and repairs on these vehicles, we're at a break even point, so why do we have...
And our...
And the other point is, not, not being supervised, I'm hearing people say, oh yeah, well, they got Sparky up at Fondo Estates, you know, uh, plowing, nothing. You know, I mean, who's overseeing that? Why, why is he plowing if he, if he's, if he's shooting sparks, I, I mean, it doesn't need to be plowed. We're paying for that, basically, cha-ching, cha-ching, thank you.
If the blades are down, we pay.
Yeah, we pay.
Well, so, though, the contract has a minimum, hours, right, once they're called in?
I'm sure there is, I don't know what it is.
Four hour minimum.
I think it's four hours, like, all day.
Yeah, I'm honestly not sure.
No, that's fine, but plow something that needs, not, whatever, it's just, there's a big problem with it, there's always been a big problem with it, and it comes down to, nobody has any say on this board whatsoever on how it's run, because you're an elected official, period. And until that's changed, and we can mandate certain steps on certain things, it will stay that way. And I'm not saying Brian's not checking the invoices, and it's not what I'm implying, what I'm implying is, there gotta be a better check and balance, there's gotta be a better way of spending his money, I'm, I'm seeing stuff on there that, that throws red flags all day long, like ice melt, you're giving me a number of, what was that, twenty-six dollars a bag, or seventeen? Seventeen? I get it all day long for six dollars, six, seven dollars a bag.
What was last year's snow and ice?
I'm not.
It's a lot, I know it's a lot, but not a lot. Two eighty or ninety?
I think you're right, I thought it was, I was, yeah, waiting, I thought it was, yeah.
We're at around one-twenty this year now? So it's, how, how are we almost half of what we were?
Last year was two forty-two.
So we're half of what we were last year at this time.
And we had no snow.
And we got no snow this year. Now, see, that's the other math I was trying to do, this, you know, last night, and you just... No, I came up with, I, I, I couldn't, I couldn't have the answer, that was one of those problems I gotta get wrong.
So as far as I'm concerned, I'm not gonna entertain this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you'd like to table it and invite the highway surveyor to come in for discussion?
Yeah, if you would. If you'd like to bring Brad with him, that's fine.
Sure.
We need to justify being fifty percent of last year when we only got ten percent of the snow.
And I also would like to invite the, um, finance committee.
That's the way I'm seeing it, you know?
I'd like the finance committee to present.
Um, the highway survey is actually scheduled to come in on April sixth.
Okay.
To meet with the finance committee, um, at six o'clock.
Alright.
And that same evening, the selectmen are meeting with FinCom at six-thirty, so it may make sense for you to just come in at six.
Okay.
Um, and meet with the highway surveyor at that time while you're...
Now, let's change our meeting till six, is that cool? Six, Bob, you don't care?
Bob says good.
Try to drive it to six.
Alright. Yeah, that's, I mean... And I'm sure nobody's doing anything wrong, it's just, we need to...
We probably got all the answers.
We need the numbers, and, uh, all the numbers. That's a lot of money to just sign off on.
Maybe that weather service, we signed up with John, could tell us, uh, how much snow in the case of six and twelve. We gotta pay a thousand bucks, and I'll have them give you a record of this year versus last year, so you can support your argument.
Oh, it can.
You know?
Yeah.
Seems like a lot of money, tell us what the weather is.
I'm gonna need some guy on the phone telling me, yeah, it's gonna snow tomorrow.
One, two, three, four things.
I'm just trying to save the town money, I just, I just...
So next, um, everybody's all set with snow and ice, right? Alright, new business, town election.
I, I do have one question, I'm sorry. These bills have already been paid.
Yeah.
This is a, um, procedural, is there any reason why this would hold anything else up, like...
Technically, legally, you're not supposed to overspend until the board of selectmen and FinCom have both voted.
Yeah.
The town accountant neglected to bring that forward. Um, I noticed it a couple of weeks ago that it had gone over.
Okay.
Um, so the bills have already been paid.
So it's really just, you have to pay people for their jobs, isn't it?
That's awesome.
No, because I know they've been paid, I mean, we have a spreadsheet of when they've been paid, but, I mean, anything from today will not get paid, certainly.
It's on hold.
I don't think they rode today.
Really? Yeah, I saw the tow trucks, that's what I was...
Oh, they were out.
And they came down my street a lot.
Depends on where you go, some places say they aren't out, people say they're out too much, you can add, you know, it's that, that rule of...
Yeah.
So... So if what's submitted would not be approved until after our April sixth meeting of a vote? And where we stand legally when a contractor works for us and we don't pay them?
Breach of contract. Just asking the questions.
You really got my answer, I'm not paying him, but die more until I get some answers. We're the ones that pay the bills, supposedly.
That's why they pay you the big bucks.
Thanks.
Alright. Okay. Well, if there's nothing more, new business, we have the town election warrant to sign, review and sign. We got one, um, BMR School District Committee, open for four years, another one open for four years, a board of, a board of health for three years, a board of selectmen for three years, two constables for three years, library trustee for three years, a planning board for five years, a town clerk for three years, town moderator for three years, trustee of the Veterans Memorial Park, non-veteran for, for three years, and one trustee of the Veterans Memorial Park, vet, which is, needs to be a veteran for three years. And that's, I'm looking for motion.
I'd like to know one thing.
Yes.
I'm asking.
Yeah.
Can we put...
No.
What? The town, uh, highway on here?
No, not on here.
This is not, no.
If it, so if it, if, no, no, because, that has to go to a town meeting, and then to a, then to a town election.
This is just what the ballot is gonna look like.
Alright, I'm just asking, well, I just went off, we're going to ballot, draw it on, and stick it with...
This is just to make sure that they didn't, they didn't forget any of the ballot, uh...
Motion to approve and sign. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now the town meeting warrant.
How many items do we have committed?
Um, we got two articles from the planning board, we got one lengthy one from the school committee. We've got the town administrator bylaw amendment, um, that town council prepared. And we'll have, um, a classification and compensation plan amendment that I need to work with the board on, um, once we go through the budget. It was a citizen's petition.
And what was that in regards?
Um, it was regarding acceptance of a road. And there was, um, one regarding hunting bylaw. That's off the top of my head, all I can think of, but I'll be working on that tomorrow and Wednesday, putting that together. Um, the town accountant worked all last week on the revolving funds, so that's been a little bit of a headache, um, dealing with that, how we're going to...
Fix.
Fix that, um... But, um, shouldn't be too bad, nothing un, I mean, nothing unexpected.
Okay.
I think the school committee's, uh, gotten their information out, everybody was well aware that was coming, planning board, we knew those were coming.
Are those, uh, zoning, are they...
Zoning, yep.
Both of it there is, is zoning?
Uh, I think one's, um, the marijuana, and I think one might, the other one might be road acceptance.
Okay.
So, I need a motion to close the warrant.
And also just keep in mind, the board does own the warrant, so you can open it up for your own benefit anytime you need to, if you wanted to put something on.
When, when would the board be ready to review it?
Um, I'll be working on drafting that over the next couple of days, I send that to town council, she sends it back, and the first meeting, to review the warrant, is gonna be that April sixth meeting.
Okay.
We'll have the first draft ready for that when we're going over the budget.
Two weeks.
And we're voting and signing on the nineteenth?
Yes.
Of posting?
Correct. So, do I have a motion to close the warrant for two thousand sixteen?
It's all moved, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have one item for that, um, when Barbara was here from Copeland and Page, um, I had asked a question in regards to putting out public information leading into a meeting, so I didn't know if it would be at the... And I asked her, and she said, you can always put out information, you know, just to state when the meeting is, um, maybe some of the bigger articles that are important, I think that's something that we should look into, maybe follow up with, um, Barbara. I know that the administrator position is, um, talked about, I know the school committee article is talked about, if we can hit every door, just that these are the articles that are on there, um, even if we just list the other ones that maybe came in, citizen's petition, or, I mean, not the revolving account, not the, you know, the things that we have to fix, but things that are going to impact people, or might be of interest to people, if we could maybe put out a every door direct, um, card, but check if Barbara is to, 'cause I'd be more than willing to help work on that and what that might look like, um, to make sure, you know, it's balanced and informational, but it also tells people when our meeting is, and that there are some major issues coming before the town and changes, and just telling them when the town meeting is, and I think, um, but she did mention it, 'cause I said, what can we put on there? And I, and, 'cause I remember asking, can we, can it be just for one item? Or does it have to be inclusive of the whole article warrant, and she said, no, it didn't. So I, I think, um, I don't know what an every door direct is cost, but I think it's a good step forward.
Yeah, the things, um, that the town clerk sends out similarly, it's not very expensive at all, I think it's maybe two hundred to do all that.
That's what I'm saying, and so that every person in town would get that, I think, I think in this year, there are some items there that are passionate, and, um, uh, you know, that people feel about, and they are major changes for our community, I think it's, it would be worth our while to, to put it out there. So, um, I don't know if Helen wants to follow up with Barbara, I don't mind following up with Barbara to get something together for the warrant, for the annual town meeting. Whatever the board desires.
I think, um, the board really should review the warrant first, maybe on the sixth, you can...
Yeah.
Once you vote whether you're gonna strike, well, you can't strike the, um...
Absolutely.
Some of them, but, um, at that point, you can determine what's gonna be kept and what's gonna be taken off, and then we can have Barbara draft something at that point. I'd just hate to have her draft something, and...
I don't know if it's drafting as much as, I don't mind drafting and working on that, just, I mean, it's just the article, you know what I mean? It's just what the town is doing, I think more of the question is, is can we just list a few items? Can we, you know, what are the, the, the do's and the do-nots of that process? I don't wanna get to the six, and then have, have, what, one, two, three, three, four weeks out to try to devise it, get it prepared, print it, I mean, I think we can get the do's and do-nots of what we can and cannot do, and then, um, you know, when the board decides to send it out because it's appropriate, then...
Yeah, certainly I can get that, yep.
That's it? Good, yeah?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Selectmen's members forum unscheduled for tonight. You ladies from the school, from the school, did you, did you wanna, 'cause there's no, we only do one public forum now, I didn't know if you guys...
No, we're all set, we're just listening.
Alright, no, I just wanted to make sure we didn't skip you guys, so. You're welcome. Alright, so our next regular meeting is April fifth, uh, at seven P M., and that's on a Tuesday due to, uh, uh, the town election on Monday, which I'm sure everybody will be attending, town election, April fourth, eight to eight. Next, we will do signatures, then we, um, need to leave this meeting and enter executive se- session under Mass General Law, Section Thirty A, Subsection Twenty-One, Part Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel executive secretary. So I'd be looking for a roll call vote to do such a thing, and then, when the executive session is over, we will re-enter, uh, adjourn that meeting, re-enter this meeting, and only to adjourn. So a motion to do, as I just...
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, thank you, everybody. Alright, thank you, everybody.